You can call the Romans for that.
Sure, Mr. Anderson, Mr. Castillo, Ms. Gill, Ms. Litten, Mr. Reitender, Ms. Russell, and Mr. Webb. Thank you.
You all join me in the pledge?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Someone would move the adoption of the agenda, please? A second? All in favor of I?
Aye.
All opposed? So we're moving on to the board session and Dr. Noonan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everybody, and welcome. Happy Tuesday evening. We are very pleased this evening to have an opportunity to do a little bit of a look back on our data from this past year. However, just to give you a little bit of a heads up, this presentation sort of morphed into something a little more than just a data presentation. So if you've had a chance to look at your board docs in preparation, which I know you all did, you will notice that it goes beyond just data and it begins to contemplate new accreditation standards and the like that are associated with the state. As Ms. Seabridge and Ms. Hi were putting this presentation together, they recognized very quickly that this was an opportunity to share with all of you some of the new information that we really need to get out, not just to you but to the broader community about how accreditation is going to be viewed this year and going forward by the state as there have been a couple of changes. So I'm anxious for them to share with you what they've put together. We've gone through it this afternoon again for the last time. And I want to just tell you upfront that because it is, gets into more than just data, it's a little bit longer. It's a little bit longer presentation than perhaps you might be prepared for. So I'm not suggesting to you that it's an hour and a half long, but we are counting on somewhere between 30 and 45 minutes for a presentation. And we have agreed that we were going to give each other some signs when we get to 30 minutes, 35, 40, and 45, so that actually we'll try to manage our time as well as possible. But we do, we do hope that this presentation is not just useful for you, but also useful for the community to get a bigger picture of how we're doing as a school system. I will say, and I won't take everything that Lisa's going to say in just a second, because I do that a lot, but I will say this, that these opportunities like we have tonight give us an opportunity to do a good program look, sort of in retrospect. This is not a really great time to talk about individual schools, about things that are happening, but really look more broadly at program to see where some of the areas of strength are and where some of our areas of growth are. And that's the beauty of doing these summative looks as we get a chance to look at our program as a whole. So thank you very much for your patience and indulgence this evening as we go through the presentation. The three of us have decided that we're going to all sort of chime in at different points as needed, but Jeannie's going to be leading the conversation. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Lisa.
Okay. Good evening. So the data that will be shared with you tonight is really more summative assessments, which measures students' growth at the end of a year, for example, with SOLs or at the end of a course with our IB or AP exams. But what I would like for you as we're going through this, keep in mind that we, throughout the school year, we do focus on growth and look at formative assessments that teachers look at throughout the school year to ensure that students are making progress throughout the year. And we use multiple measures to inform those teacher instructional practices. So we won't get into the formative data tonight. We'll be more focused on the summative data. And I'm just going to turn it over to Jeannie so that we don't take our minutes away.
That's right. I need every minute I have. So thank you for having me tonight. And I think Dr. Noonan already mentioned, it has morphed into a little bit more. When I first started the presentation, I think I had maybe 15 slides. And then I started looking at it and it started with SOL. And I'm thinking, you know what? It's not in context. I need to put it in context so people understand really what the data means and why we're looking at it. So that's how it evolved. So let's, let's take it from there. So why are we having this presentation? So there's certain bullet points I put up here, so assessment data. One of the reasons is because it's based on the new changes from the state and federal levels, which are impacting the way we look at data and it is in a positive way as for our students. It also informs us of areas where we are excelling and then also areas where we can strive to do better. It helps us to define our work around specific goals. And also, it can enhance teaching and learning when we work in our collaborative teams together to dig deeper into that data, to see what it's telling us, because data can tell us a story and we can learn from that. And we can make those changes to put action in place to make a difference for our kids. So I'm coming to the placemat first. So looking at this is really what's driving our work and guiding us. And a lot of the things on the placemat have a lot to do with, with data, whether it's in a collaborative team or whether it's using assessment data. We're using that data to look at multi-tiered systems of support. So we are using this as our guide. So starting off with the new Virginia standards of accreditation, I think you need to put it into that context a little bit and learn about the changes. There have been a lot of changes. And we really need to talk about those before we actually look at those numbers. In the board docs, you had a link to this document from the state. And it pretty, it's a two-page document, not a three-page, and it, it really explains the changes for the standards. And hopefully you had a chance to take a look at that. So one thing to take away from this is it's not just based on math and reading pass rates anymore for the standards of accreditation. It's moved more into a growth look. And I know this board has talked about that in the past. How do we look at growth and not just that pass rate? So starting off with James Lane, Superintendent Public Instruction for Department of Education. This is a quote taken from him. And he says, "An emphasis on overall pass rates can obscure the needs of groups of students who require additional support." So this is one of the things the state is, is taking a look at. How else can we measure achievement for all students, not just based on a number of whether or not they hit that 400 and they pass that SOL? The main thing is, are they showing growth? Are they moving forward with their, their learning? So some of the biggest takeaways from the standards of accreditation is for school accountability. The first piece is that kids in the school division or school will get credit for students who are making progress in English and/or mathematics. Those are the two areas that they measure. Progress means they're showing growth. And I'll show you in a little bit what that looks like on a scale. And we also will receive credit for our English language learners making proficiency towards their, their learning English. So that's the WEATA access test that the kids have to take in March and whether or not they're, they're showing that progress and moving through the levels of level one through five. Evaluating on success and narrowing the achievement gaps in English and mathematics again. So if we have a large gap, are we actually making progress from year to year or narrowing that? Evaluated on success in reducing absenteeism and lowering the dropout rates. And our high schools also will be expected to meet goals for increasing participation and achievement in advanced programs for all kids. So all kids are expected to take either an advanced class such as IB, AP, dual enrollment, or take a career and technical education class or CTE class along with a credential. And that's an exam that they have to take. For the indicators on the standards of accreditation, we're measured on three levels. So we could either be at a level one, a level two, or a level three on the indicators. I put an example on the slide here just for you to kind of get an idea of what it looks like. The achievement gaps is one of the indicators and student engagement is the other. And it spells out what that really means. So for example, an English achievement gap, for achievement gaps, no more than one student group at level two in English. So when we're looking at our special population groups, for example, we couldn't have more than one at that level or to be able to hit that level. And then here's the, the table that I mentioned about showing growth for mathematics and reading. So when you're looking at this, it's based on the scale scores. And that's what the state uses to show whether the students have passed, whether they're at basic proficient or advanced. So for example, if I'm looking at the mathematics one right now, and I had a student in third grade who had a scaled score of zero to 305 on, on the mathematics SOL, but the following year in fourth grade, their score went to a scaled score of 311 to 330, that would show growth. So this is the progress table that the state is going to use to measure that. And it's very similar when you're looking at the, the reading SOL. And notice that the, these scale scores are different in both of those tables. This diagram helps kind of explain it a little bit about what it looks like when they're, they're calculating the accreditation and the levels. So if you're looking at this, the 10 students at the top in black, if 10 kids sat and took a test, and then six of those students actually passed the test, but you had four students who failed, if the four students who failed, two of them showed growth in mathematics or, in this case, English, that would count. And then the other student, if one of them was an English learner, showed progress on the WEATA access, that would count as well. So if you look down at the bottom, you'll see it has your six students plus the two who showed growth, plus the one who showed proficiency in the English language of showing growth. That's nine kids count as a pass out of the 10. So that's how they're looking at that, that combined rate.
So for clarification too, when, when Jeannie talks about pass, she's not talking about the overall pass rate on the SOL. She's talking about making progress for accreditation. So these are not, these are not at all associated with SOL pass rates. Rather, they're associated just with accreditation, just to make sure it's clear.
So we're looking at that achievement of all students. So it's another way of looking at growth for our kids. And it's not just passing the SOL. So some other changes with the standards of accreditation is with our history, social science. And this is new with our graduating class of 2022. And our students currently in ninth grade, if they were here with us in eighth grade and they took the World History I SOL and passed it and passed the course, they do not have to sit for an SOL while they are in high school for graduation. They basically earn their verified credit in history and they're good to go. So any student who might not have passed in eighth grade would then have to take, take an SOL to get that verified credit. And any students moving into our division that didn't come with a verified credit in ninth grade, we would also have to assess. So that's new. It's totally different than what it had been in the past. Most of it is because of ESSA. And ESSA, the federal government is basically saying that we are going to use mathematics, reading, and science. And history was not part of that. So they chose that. It could be.
We won't remember it.
Yeah, yeah, that was that decision. So it says that beginning this year with our graduating class of 2022, so they're not going to need to sit for an SOL. Not in history. So if they, I guess, and I'm just trying to wrap my head around this. So if you're a student who hasn't yet taken an eighth grade SOL, so maybe you're in sixth grade, fifth grade, whatever, are they still going to have to take the eighth grade SOL or is just, they just will never have to take a history SOL? The eighth grade would be their verified credit for graduation. Okay, so going. Okay, so we're still going to have the eighth grade SOL and once somebody passes that, that's it, as opposed to having to do? They don't have to sit. Okay, thanks. So one of the other changes with the standards of accreditation is with science. And science was not part of federal accountability in the past, and it now is at the high school level. So the way they count that for accreditation is a combined pass rate for any science courses being offered at that, at that level. English writing also has a change. So that came out last year. So with the English writing SOL, we are now allowed to give a performance-based assessment instead of having the kids sit for the online writing assessment. So a performance-based assessment is another way of assessing kids so that they can show their understanding using the five Cs, which I'm going to talk about here in a little bit, which are very similar to the approaches to learning. And they're, they're on the screen as well, critical thinking, creative thinking, and so on. So we're at the point right now where we haven't really made a final decision whether or not we're going to do the PVA this year or whether we're going to wait. And one reason is because we're waiting for guidance from the state. There's a rubric that's supposed to be coming out. So it's a common rubric that we're supposed to be using. We haven't seen it yet. We're supposed to get it soon. So we wanted to kind of see that before we actually made that decision. Peter Laub has, is the collaborative teacher leader for the English department at George Mason. He's been working with his department and with us on getting those developed. And the fifth grade writing assessment went away a couple years ago. It's just at high school now. And the writing, performance-based assessment is based on three grade levels. So it's based on the standards in ninth grade, 10th grade, and 11th grade. So probably all three grade levels will be working towards that performance-based assessment in some sort of portfolio. So on this slide, it talks about the course requirements and verified credit. The change here is that it used to be six verified credits that students had to earn. It is now five. And that's for an advanced diploma and for a standard diploma. The reason it's five is because in English, there's the two, and the performance base would count for that one.
Can I ask you a question on that previous slide?
Sure.
So the, the sticky note there, the virtual sticky note, not to be assessed more than one time. Can you explain the thinking behind that?
Yes.
Why not there?
Some of the new guidance that is coming out is that if a student is only to be assessed once on an SOL to earn their verified credit and that we are not to assess them more than one time. The one reason behind that, the main reason, is because of all the public attention that testing has, you know, gotten, about too many tests and so on and so forth. And Virginia's trying to be very innovative about the way they're approaching assessments. And that's where they're, they're the leaders in performance-based assessments right now across the nation. A lot of the states are looking at us in, in this state on how we're, we're doing assessing now. So that is really one of the main reasons is trying to move away from that online testing and move towards this more performance-based, where kids really are using their skill set and their understanding to show what they know.
So to further clarify, you can assess a student in a content more than once, just only on the SOL ones.
Yes.
So you can utilize a performance-based assessment for a second assessment at a different grade level. But it truly is to try to become more innovative and creative and asking kids to show what they know as opposed to showing what they don't know through standardized assessment.
And we're still being held accountable for teaching the standards. So whether or not there is an actual sit-down online SOL that goes with it, we still have to teach those standards. And we have to show that those kids have, have learned those standards. So whether through a performance-based or unit test or some, some other kind of assessment.
Okay. The other question I had was, could there be negative side effects for a student who doesn't pass their assess, doesn't get their verified credit through the assessment through an SOL the one time they're allowed to do that? But it sounds like the performance-based assessments could be used to do that at a, at a later stage.
Yeah. And usually if a student, like for example, in eighth grade, the World History I, if a student didn't pass in eighth grade, they would have another opportunity in ninth grade to take the World History II SOL or the US Government SOL. So there's other opportunities. And in high school, it's a little bit easier on kids because they have multiple opportunities to do a retest. So because the main thing is they have to graduate. So they could have remediation and tutoring, and then they could have three, four times until they actually pass. So hopefully it doesn't take that long, but, but they do have those multiple opportunities.
Okay, thanks.
So college career and civic readiness is a big part of the standards of accreditation. This comes from the profile of a Virginia graduate. And one of the, the components, looking at the diagram, a lot of it is very much now looking at that career, workplace readiness, community, and civic responsibility. And one way to get our kids exposure to that is really having them look at the rigorous courses such as IB and AP and the CTE, aligning it with a credential, work-based learning such as internships, externships, and service learning. So we do have to report this now. Where in the past, we did not have to report this to the state. So I know we were scrambling a little bit in the spring trying to get all the data into the system to send to the state. And we do so many great things in those areas already. It's really just figuring out a way to capture all of that. But that is now part of the standards of accreditation. The other part of it is for graduation, there's some additional graduation requirements. One is a virtual course, all kids, and that's been around for a little bit. All students must complete one virtual course prior to graduation. And we do accomplish that through our financial literacy course. Even it might be a hybrid kind of approach where they're sitting in class, but they're also doing some online modules or components through that process. Or it might be through the high C. They choose to do it that way instead. And then the other graduation requirement is the CPR and the AED instruction that they're getting in their health classes at George Mason High School. So to finish up with the standards of accreditation, there's three levels. You're either accredited, you're accredited with conditions, or your accreditation is denied. So preliminary data that we've been looking at, we can safely say that we will be accredited. They are going to release all of the standards of accreditation for the state on September 27th. It will come out and be public at that time. And it will show all the indicators and where we rate as far as the levels and so on. So I'm sure we'll be sharing with you that information a little bit later. So part of federal accountability with ESSA is this, they told the, the state basically, is we have to have targets. And we have to make sure that we're trying to reach those targets through a process over a period of years. So when we're looking at this in reading and mathematics, this one being reading, if you look at the FCCPS pass rate for 2017-18 column, and then the one before for year one targets, we actually made our target for the reading progress table right now. But when you take a little bit of a closer look at it, and you start thinking about it in a long-term look, you start to see that we have to think forward about this. Where are we going to be one year from now, two years from now, three years from now, if we don't show the growth in these areas that we, we need to see? And you'll see economic disadvantage, for example. We made pretty much the target this year at 67, but two years from now, the target moved on us and it's now 68. If we don't show growth with this special population, we're not going to meet that target. So another reason we have to really look at what we're doing, use this data, and, and really make some changes. So our English learners, we have a little bit more time, but again, if we don't show that progress, we're going to also hit that wall. This one is for mathematics. So when you're looking at this one, you'll notice that there are some areas that are a little bit of a darker beige color. The reason they're a little bit darker, if you haven't already noticed it yourself, and I know like my little red boxes are kind of glaring, but you know, we do need to look at the data. That's what it's for. We don't want to put our heads in the sand. We can't do that. So when we're looking at this with our Asian population and our economically disadvantaged population, you'll notice that the state or the, the target is higher than what our pass rate was. So these are areas that we, we do need to look at because that target is moving and it's, it's even higher the next year. And we have to be very much aware of that and try to figure out what, what we can do to support kids.
So I'm assuming that these numbers are, I guess, malleable in the sense that obviously as the population grows, so they're really more of a percentage. You're just showing the real numbers just because it's easier to look at. But if, so it would just be adjusted based on the percentage if our population increased or decreased in a specific area?
Yes. From year to year, it could change based on different variables. That could happen, absolutely.
But it's always a percentage of the population. Yeah.
Just on this slide and the previous slide, a couple of questions. What are the consequences if the targets aren't met?
So what this state's doing is they're using this to determine which schools need to be put into basically a plan for improvement.
Okay.
So one thing the, the state is, is taking a look at is different measures, this being one of them, obviously. And those indicators, whether we're at a level one, two, or three, and how many of those levels we hit. And all of the schools, no matter whether you're a level one, two, or three, every school is expected to write a plan based on the data and then how they're going to either sustain or, or grow in the areas where they're, they're seeing that they might have some, some work.
Okay. And then a sort of a follow-on question, which is, particularly on the previous slide, looked like the data was showing things were in pretty good shape right now. I understand the thinking for the future, but how did, when the targets were set, how was the process set so that it would make sure that the bar wasn't set too low at the initial status? You know what I mean?
I can't answer that question.
I know a little bit about it.
Okay, good.
Probably just enough to be, to be dangerous. It actually was quite, there was quite a bit of consternation about it. Because if you look at these data targets for each of the subgroups, they're disparate depending on which subgroup you're looking at. So there was, I believe, a basing of some of the targets on a three-year average, a previous three-year average, and then looking at a percentage growth year over year out to 2023, 24. So sort of growing. But also understanding that it can't just be a one-year growth pattern, that it needs to be a couple of years and then a step up and a couple of years and a step up. But it was based, as I understand it, on a three-year rolling average.
Thanks.
And you'll notice too, at the year seven long-term goal, it resets itself. So if you look at all of the special populations, hit the same number again, and it restarts again the following. So, and just the arrows again, showing that where the growth has to be made. So performance-based assessments, I threw this in here only because we talked a little bit about it with writing. And just as a refresher, in case you may have forgotten, the state already has removed the third grade science and history, multiple choice online SOL, and replaced them with performance-based assessments, which the teachers are utilizing in the classroom now. Fifth grade as well with writing and US history to 1865. And also sixth grade with the US history 1865 to the present. And again, I just want to emphasize the five Cs are really what's supposed to be taught or the skills shown through the performance-based assessments, which again is very much like our approaches to learning for IB. And then the writing and of course, PVA is also coming. I know the state has been looking at history at the high school level. And they thought that they were going to have that in place this year as well, but the General Assembly had different thought about that. So it is still an online assessment.
And again, these PBAs are very much in line with our PYP program and our approaches to, to teaching in both the elementary and the middle school. So we didn't have as much work to do as, as other school divisions with this change.
Yeah, it was a lot easier for us. And I just showed this slide on here because this is what a performance-based assessment document looks like that our teachers are utilizing. There's always a rubric, which is very much like our planners that we're using for IB. And it's to measure growth. So kids will see what, what they're supposed to accomplish before they even start. And then they can look at it and kind of like, ah, where am I at? Get some feedback from the teacher, go back, revise some things, come back, try it again. So they can grow on that scale and that rubric. It's not meant to be like an SOL online where, hey, you got that score, too bad, too sad, you're done. So this is meant to be that growth model, like, hey, here's some feedback, go tweak it a little and then come back and let's see how you did. The task description for GRASPs is the exact item that is in the MYP unit planner that teachers are to be using for their summative assessments. So when they rolled this out with the performance-based assessments from the state, it was like, huh, we're already doing that. So it was kind of nice to see that it's not a whole new thing that we have to adopt. It, we really were already, already there. We have work to do. Don't get me wrong. We're still, we're still working on it, but we're, we're in pretty good shape. So now, this is where we're going to start really getting into the numbers a little bit with what it does look like for the SOLs. The state already has this on the public website. So anybody in the world can go on and click and see what our data looks like and along with any other school system in the state. The overall pass rate when you're first looking at it is kind of like, what do you see? Doesn't look bad, right? So, and this kind of goes back to James Lane and his comment about so much dependency on the overall pass rate. And yeah, it looks really good. But when you start drilling back a little bit, are we really looking at our special populations and seeing? and seeing if there's some growth that we should be making that maybe we're not? So right now, overall, it doesn't, it doesn't look bad. Looks good. So when you start to look at this again at the division level, I'm going to take you from like division to school to course because you've got to start drilling down and peeling back the layers of that onion a little bit. So, or Virginia ranking in the entire state, we're number one in history, number two in reading, number three in writing, number four in science. And we hit number six in math. And then when you're looking at our Northern Virginia ranking, we're again, looks pretty good, okay, number one in math and everything else. And then we tied for science, and that was with Allen County. So they're kind of like right there with us. And then I put this in here only because I think it's important to know too that when you're looking at some of the numbers, you're going to see a little bit of a dip in our numbers. But one thing to keep in mind that you're going to see the dip in the state numbers as well. That the overall, the state noticed that there's about a 1% to 2% drop in all five of the SOLs.
Can I jump in just for a second? Because we did get a question earlier prior to the presentation tonight about what is a statistical percentage drop or gain, what's significant? And I want to, just as you're previewing these or looking at these data, one of the things that I want to just share is that there isn't really a statistical analysis or any kind of process that we can utilize looking at the SOLs to determine how much growth is statistically significant or decline is statistically significant because there are too many variables in the data. And some of the variables are the tests aren't the same from year to year, the cohorts aren't the same from year to year. There are a lot of issues with testing conditions and the like. However, as I was discussing with Mr. Anderson before the meeting this evening, as an industry sort of working premise, myself along with other superintendents sort of regionally and across the state, use 3% as sort of the guideline for, is this something we need to pay attention to or not? Because we're going to, we're going to believe 1%, 2%, 3%, there could be enough variation in cohorts and in tests and the like. However, anything more than 3%, either way, is something we really want to kind of dig into a little bit more deeply. So a lot of times you get, you'll hear things like, wow, you guys went down two points in mathematics. Well, that may not matter. It doesn't, I mean, it matters, but there may be some reason in there that's descriptive when you really dig into the data. So I want to kind of share that with you just upfront. Again, this is a big picture look at our program. It's not, we're not drilling down by student in this presentation, but we do that in our schools every single day, drilling down by student, by name and by need. So as we look at these in broad strokes, these larger variations are those that we really want to pay attention to.
Mr. Castillo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I just thought, so, I mean, 3% still seems to me to be within the, for lack of a better term, the margin of error. I mean, how, you say 3%, what do some divisions see as the upper and lower bounds? I mean, it seems to me that this is a marathon and not a sprint. And so the long-term trends would be much more important than year-over-year fluctuations, especially with not the same cohort.
Absolutely. Preferably, I'd like to look at five-year trends. I think that gives us the best information. And we want to set targets for ourselves that are three to five years out to say, here's where we want to be aspirationally and kind of make progress towards those goals. I think the question about what are the outer bounds is a, is a good one. And for me, I think a lot of it is driven in some ways by community pressure, by other drivers from the state, by curriculum folks at the state level saying, you know, if you're seeing this much variation in the score, there could be some other issues at play. So I think the bounds range from 1% to 5%. Personally, I feel confident with that 3% range either way. But there's no standard measure of error or margin of error that I can share with you that says, this is, this is what it is. And I don't know if that's responsive to your question or not, but except to say this, I completely agree that it's the long game that we're looking at. So when we look at the growth tables that, you know, Ms. Seabird shared earlier, or those numbers, you know, what does it look like in 2022 and where do we need to be? These statistical jumps up and down are not as important as where we are five years from now. And so I really would like to try as best we can to kind of keep our eyes on the prize of where are we going? And just know that there's going to be some variations. We're not going to pat our, break our arms, patting ourselves on the back over a 3% increase in one or be overly beat ourselves up over a decline in 3% somewhere else. But if we're seeing it over a long trend, then I think we need to dig in. And we need to figure out, what is the issue? We're small enough. I was saying, saying to the team today, we're small enough, we should be able to figure it out. You know, we can, we can follow the line all the way back to figure out where were the gaps in this young person's program? And how do we now fill those gaps? And that's the one, not the one, but one of the beauties of being small.
So we're going to dig a little deeper now. Now we're going to really look at our special populations. We saw that tip of the iceberg or the overall for our division. Now we're going to take a look at our special populations.
I'm going to chime in on this one, if that's okay. I'm going to share this slide because I think it's an important one to sort of pay attention to in the context of the experience that we're having here in the City of Falls Church with respect to our student population. You'll note that this compares 2016-17 to 2017-18 populations of students by English language learner, economically disadvantaged, or special education without 504. That means that these are our kids that are on an IEP, right? You'll remember last year through our budget conversations that our enrollment from 16-17 to 17-18 was flat, relatively flat. We had an overall growth of about five kids. However, in these three populations, economically disadvantaged English language learners and special ed students, we grew by 74 kids. So that means that we had 69 kids that didn't, that weren't in these categories, that left our school division and were replaced with kids that are economically disadvantaged English language learners and special ed. It's great, we're happy to have them. We take everyone in our system and that's what makes us really great. It does change the makeup of our division. And so I share that because I think it's important to know that the growth of 74 students in our special populations from one year to the next is not an insignificant infusion of need into our system, which then ultimately does have resource allocation ramifications and also potentially could have some overarching ramifications for our, for our need to really dig in instructionally to make sure we're meeting the needs of every single kid in our division.
So these, this slide might look a little familiar because this is the one that we showed you in the spring when we had the special populations presentation. And the reason I wanted to bring this one back up is because these are the kids who you're going to see the data on now as we drill into this. So here's our reading, and you'll notice it has all students and then it has our special populations listed right after that. And when you're looking at this, we'll see that there's a little trend here. And this kind of goes back to what Mr. Castillo was saying, is that we see, we saw here that some of our populations definitely are making some growth. So looking at English language learners, for example, going from a 54% pass rate in 2014 to a 71 in 2016. And then we had a 69 this current year, but there is something behind that. And I think it's important to point that out, that we had a little bit of a dip because there's no VGLA this year. VGLA was an assessment that English language learners were allowed to take if they were at a certain level, such as a level one, two, three English proficiency. Instead of sitting for the reading online SOL assessment, not even being able to read English, they were permitted to take portfolio artifacts of their work and work with a teacher on learning the material, reteaching maybe what was done in the classroom, and then show their mastery through evidence on whatever that work was that was then scored on a rubric. And this is the first year that we were not permitted to use that assessment. And we knew we were probably going to see a little bit of a dip. I actually expected more of a dip than, than what we're seeing right now. So we're still in pretty good shape. And then with our students with disabilities, they've also shown some consistent growth throughout those years. And we are above the state average in reading. And number one, with students with disability, yes. So now looking at the writing, we've also seen here some, some nice growth in economic disadvantage. Usually, you know, this is the group we really struggle with the most, but they've actually shown some gains in, in writing as well as our English learners in this area. Yeah, look at that, English learners, that makes me so happy. Number one in the state for our Ls. And then again, students with disabilities grew at number one in the state in those special populations. With mathematics, oop, back.
Dumb question, TS, too small a size to calculate?
Yes, it's, the number was under 10.
Okay, thanks.
No, it's not.
Mr. Castillo?
Sorry, I bring this up often, but again, I, I find it really frustrating that we compare different groups of people year over year because I don't think that tells you a lot about the particular arc of how a student does. And I know we've talked about finding other ways to do that, but I really, I think the premise of this exercise is deeply flawed. I mean, you can look at this and yes, it's good that with different groups, we're getting better results. But I, we've got to find a better way to track how the cohorts go from year to year.
So we don't disagree that this is not the best way to track these data. We, this is how the state collects it, this is how the feds collect it, this is how we want to share it with you. But we also have later in the presentation some cohort data, so that may be helpful to see as well. Just because that's the way they collect it doesn't mean we have to do it. But I think other people will want to sort of compare apples to apples.
Right, and I don't know if we can beat the drum with the Virginia Department of Education and say, this just doesn't, it's sort of like, I hate this analogy, but it's sort of like comparing, well, how did this year's football team compare to last year's football team? And the answer is, it really doesn't tell you a whole lot about the needs of the current year. So I know changing the entire educational apparatus's point of view of things is not easy, but this just strikes me as madness.
We were fortunate insofar as we have Dr. Lane in the state superintendent's role for curriculum and instruction now because of his experiences as a superintendent in a number of districts here in Virginia. And I would say that there was some movement before Dr. Staples left to begin looking at data differently through cohorts. Our move while Dr. Staples was in was to look at growth. And so we kind of are taking bits and pieces of it and kind of pulling it apart and figuring out what's next. And I do believe that looking at growth, the performance-based assessment, and looking at cohort progress is sort of the next frontier of where we are headed in the state. And I'm excited about that, and I know Dr. Lane is too. We, as you may recall, the last two years, I've been fortunate enough to be on the state superintendent's study council. And I assure you that we are beating the drum, and the person, saying, this is what we want, this is what we want. And because you're right, it is, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. Again, this gives us some programmatic information though, sort of at a top level. But it doesn't really help us truly understand what we see.
And that's, that's also one of the reasons why we ask teachers throughout the year to do the formative assessment because we want to know going along how students are progressing. And are they growing rather than waiting just until the end of the year? Because this one assessment is just one assessment. We really need to know how they're doing. And because if a student isn't making progress throughout the year, there's going to be frustration there. And so we don't want that to happen. So we really bank a lot on the formative assessments that we get.
I think those progress tables we saw earlier definitely shows that they're trying to show growth. And you'll see some progress tables in here a little bit later. So looking at math, a little bit of a different story here on math. The state pass rate is at 66, and with our economic disadvantage, we are not meeting the state pass rate. And we do have some work that we're going to have to do here. We put some things in place already with professional development and math workshop. Jen Fesidin's been working really hard with the math teachers on scope and sequence and textbook adoption, knowing that we, we have to do some things here to change that. Our history and social sciences, again, nothing glaring, doing fairly well in these areas. Again, with our special populations, there's been some, some nice growth just this year alone. And then again, looking at our state and where they're, we're rating, and number one for special populate, or special ed, and then number six for English learners. And with science, again, like math, we have a little work to do. We're not quite hitting that state pass rate. So with those two special population groups, so we're going to have to drill down. And again, this is that surface look, so we have to start looking at what's happening in the classroom, what's happening with the students, where are we really needing to put our focus? So back to the placemat again, just looking at that piece of it. This is going to guide us on our work and it's really going to help us focus on closing that achievement gap with our kids because we do definitely have, have some of that. So on this one.
One of the other areas that I think has been a real challenge is as a special population of the gifted and talented, where they come on the SOLs, firewalling at 600, and how do you measure growth there? I mean, it seems to me you could say there's an achievement gap if a student isn't growing to the extent he or she can. So what, what are we doing about that?
I think with the standards is just one thing. It's that, that you hit the ceiling, but we have other opportunities. So it's really looking at the data for the IB, for AP, the dual enrollment, the courses that do extend and challenge the kids.
We also, can you click, go back to the placemat? Because we're calling it out very discreetly. Under multi-tiered systems of support, which has traditionally been sort of looked at as intervention for students that are not being successful or working with kids that need social and emotional support. You'll note in the, in that column under multi-tiered systems of support, we've added this year for the first time, extension, enrichment, and innovation. Because I think that our MTSS specialists can, and our classroom teachers can look for ways to differentiate instruction to go into more depth and complexity with kids within the content area. So our, our next work going forward is talking about what are the, what does rigorous instruction really look like? And how do we differentiate to meet the need within rigorous instruction for those students that can achieve at higher levels? Because I, I do, I do understand what you're saying. And when we talk about meeting every student by name and by need, we really are talking about all students, not just students that need that extra time and support. So, so we are, we are focusing on it within the context of our professional development and professional learning as well.
All right, so this is at the, again, drilling down, looking at the school level, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this just for the sake of time because you're really not, there's nothing really popping out as much here at the school level. It's still kind of like that overall division look. You're going to see a little bit of a change in, in some of the scores, but nothing, nothing glaring again. So looking at Mary Ellen Henderson in the 90s, you know, pretty much consistent, not a lot of dips. And then TJ, one nice thing here, just like want to do a shout-out for TJ, looking at their science, they did have a pretty substantial increase on their, on their science pass rate. Now here's that cohort-type progression. So if we're looking, digging even deeper now, not just by building level, but actually starting to look at grade level and course level, you can start seeing some of those trends and how kids are doing. If you're going horizontal, like a grade three English reading, and I go from 87, 92 to 89, that's your apples to oranges. It's not the same kids, it's different kids each year. It's the same basic curriculum and assessment, but it's not the same kids. But if you take a totally different look at this and you start going diagonally, and you start at grade three and then move a column to grade four and another column to grade five, now you're looking at basically the same kids, give or take a few. And you're starting to see a little bit of a different pattern that's happening across the board. And then at the bottom, notice it kind of like changes a little bit because that's the writing piece is a little different at the bottom.
This this chart also presumes, though, that these scores are scaled to each other, right? And that it is an apples-to-apples comparison year over year. And I'm not completely convinced through the data that I've been provided that our SOLs are are scaled from year to year. That being said, this is about the best comparison we're going to get, however.
Yeah, it's totally different. I mean, the content's different, the questions are different. It's not the same assessment, so, but it's the closest they they're getting right now, which is better than what it was. And then looking at math, notice that it doesn't go all the way down throughout all the courses. It stops at grade five, and the reason being is because here is where we start accelerating different courses, and the kids start skipping a little bit in sixth grade. So it's not the same kids anymore. Now they're starting to really mix up a little bit based on the math placement that they're they're in.
And I would say in elementary, there is some acceleration going on for the students who need that, but they are taking the SOL that is their grade level specific, where when you get to middle and high school, a sixth grader may be taking the Math 8 test or could even be taking an Algebra 1.
It starts mixing.
I also think it's worthy in those, in all of these charts, just to kind of look at the state pass rate as well, because it is an apples-to-apples comparison from that perspective. It's it's our cohort versus everybody else's cohort, this one snapshot of time. So at least we can do some comparison of how we're doing relative to everybody else.
Mr. Castillo?
So what, but what are we, what, if anything, do we see by looking at the cohort model that opens our eyes compared to the the other way? Because I, to me, I see a lot more fluctuation in the numbers. So to me, it's, it raises more questions than it answers.
I mean, our hope is that the the difference would be greater than one or two points, but.
Well, I'm looking at the English SOL. Go back one. And if you look at third grade to fourth grade to fifth grade, those that are circled, we do see growth year over year. The next fourth to fifth to sixth, we go from 91 to 93 to 92. When you get into that 90% plus range, it's harder to move the needle for sure, which is pretty, pretty solid. We're holding steady. I think the fifth grade cohort is an interesting one, because we go from 94, 92 to 91, but again, sort of within that range of 90%. You know, seventh grade to end-of-course reading, 92, 90, 96. That's an interesting one to me, simply because when you get into the seventh, eighth, you know, there's, especially the high school, we have expedited retakes, so students have an opportunity to very quickly to retake the test, so they may be more likely to achieve. And that's why I think we see some pretty significant pass rates at the high school level. But I I think when I look at these from a from a cohort perspective, what I would look for would be, and we don't have it here, if we started at 70% pass rate and went down three years or four years, and we ended up at a 90% pass rate, that would be important. If we started at 90% and we went to 70, I think that that would be important, too. But if we're holding steady within that 90 to 100 range, I don't, I don't know that this tells us a whole lot more, except that our cohorts might actually look a lot like the one-year snapshot that we're seeing year over year.
In science, there's, the correlation's a little bit different as far as trying to find that cohort. And then with our history, it's, again, we're in the 90s, we're doing, we're doing well. And these are all the courses that we offer. Notice there's a lot less history, there's a lot less science, and that's because those are performance-based. And then now what? We have all this information, all this data. What are we, what are we doing with it? Which standards are students struggling with? This kind of gets back to really drilling down, like what you were saying is, is what's the next step? This is really the work of the teachers and the the building administrators and the specialists is really taking it to that next level, taking a look at the individual students, looking at the actual classrooms, looking at which standards kids were struggling on, looking at curriculum to see if there's areas that need to be tightened there. Maybe there's instructional strategies that could be put in place, but really answering those those four critical questions that are on our placemat, working in those collaborative learning teams, and really saying is, like, what do we want our kids to know? And and how do we know that they've learned it? And what do we do if they haven't? And and if they have, you know, where do we extend them? Where do we enrich them? And so on. So it's really having those conversations, having that growth mindset, whether it's with our staff or whether, like, having our students and and having those critical conversations and and putting things into action. So we're going to be working a lot with our teachers, and I know our specialists have already been doing that in collaborative teams and really starting to drill into that data a lot more. We have a lot of data. I mean, when we're looking at what we have, we have a lot of things. I mean, there's all kinds of spreadsheets out there. There's some beautiful spreadsheets that some of the grade levels are using, and it has all kinds of assessment data. It's looking at growth. It's looking to see if kids are falling behind. It's it's trying to drill down to those standards and trying to pull out, you know, 80% of our class got this, but the 20, these 20% of the kids didn't. Why didn't they? Let's pull them aside. Let's work with them on that. Or maybe 100% didn't get that one question. So. The new graduation requi- go ahead.
Mr. Rinder?
Before we go on, I'd like to return to sort of couple of the red boxes. And the reason is that the data that you've shown us this year is somewhat similar to the data that we saw last year, which is, we are at or above state levels almost everywhere, some places substantially above, except for, and I remember math specifically, economically disadvantaged students in science and math, with math being the one that I remember from last year. Science may have been there, too. And that's a very unique drop, and it's very, in a sense, isolated. And I I'm just sort of curious, we've started to figure out why. I mean, there are, I could speculate clearly, we have a very educated population, and in some sense, that often correlates with economic advantage. And so we often get a bump that would drive us up in terms of a higher economic status for people who are not in the economically disadvantaged category, regardless of other special populations. But we wouldn't get that there. But again, it's just science and math. We do see sort of a a leap upward compared to the state, at least if I go back and look at it, for a lot of the other categories. So that that seems to say to me that there's something that either in the economically disadvantaged kids population that we have, or in the way we're teaching, that doesn't, are we, are we assuming that they're getting support at home that they're not getting, that they would be getting if they weren't in an economically disadvantaged category? I could speculate it all night, but I'm, that you, especially in the spirit of a second goal, I'm really interested in trying to figure out how we get around that piece and solve science and math for economically disadvantaged students.
There's a lot of factors that come into play with with this population. It's difficult to know exactly who these kids are, because we can't tell people who they are. We, some of the kids are identified in other areas, so they might be economically disadvantaged and special ed, or economically disadvantaged and English learner, or they might not be identified in any area. But I think you kind of hit it on the head, too, by it's in like an environment where maybe we are making some assumptions that they have the same situation at home to be able to do their homework, when probably maybe they don't. They're taking care of a younger one, or they have to work to help support the family, or maybe the environment isn't conducive to trying to sit and learn that way. Or they have, it could be, they don't have a model at home of somebody who, you know, has gone through that process and and, you know, kind of like sits with them and does homework. So there's a lot of factors that come into play with that, with that population.
I I do think it's important to note, and and Ms. Seabird sort of said it, is that federal regulation and law doesn't allow us to share the names of students who are economically disadvantaged because of the free and reduced lunch list unless they have an educational need to know. And so we've been able to sort of work through that with our, by having our principals sign an MOU last year, allowing them to know who the students are. So the, so to be more direct with your question, we we are really trying to figure that out, too. And now that we know who the students are by name, we're really drilling down to that level to try to figure out what is it? And then what kind of supports can we put around them at school? I sort of am of of the mind that we we need to work really closely with our community. And I think we've started to do that through, for example, the Family Resource Center that we're about to get ready to open, through outreach through our, to our Spanish community by utilizing Erica Zavalos, working with our parents one-on-one, having all these parent coffees and the like. But we also have to take a look in the mirror to figure out what is it that we're doing instructionally that isn't or is or isn't resonating? I think that school systems in general, and I I don't know that I would necessarily throw us in there, but I think it's a good question to ask, oftentimes will create an intervention and and create this intervention and presume that it works without any follow-up sort of progress monitoring on the backside to say, did it actually work? And so one of the pieces that we're talking about also in the placemat is, is the intervention we're doing actually working? And how are we monitoring the progress of that intervention in short intervals, so that we know at the end of two weeks of this intervention, it's working or it's not working? Because if it's not working, we can't keep doing it. And I, my fear is that that we have a practice where oftentimes we provide, I'm looking at my colleagues over here with a little bit of trepidation, but I do think that we have had a practice where we've provided intervention for kids, and we haven't monitored it for its success or lack of success in a way that is meaningful to actually making progress with a kid. So I think that that's one of the things we're going to be paying a lot of attention to this year, because if we keep doing what we've always done and get the same results, that's the definition of insanity. So let's stop the insanity, and let's figure out what's actually working for for some of these kids. And it might mean doing something remarkably different than what we're currently doing. But having the capacity of knowing who the kids are at the school level with the principals gives us a fighting chance.
And we are making some changes to our process for how we look at students and how we determine what interventions they should be involved in, and then how we circle back to to what those students are doing. So our new MTSS coordinator has been leading the research and really looking at a process and really focusing on how we can be a system and that individual schools aren't doing, having different processes, so to make us more system.
But in many ways, and I I don't want to belabor this point, but I want to be as clear as I can be, many ways, it's about getting really clear about what we want students to know, be able to do, and understand. So are our fourth-grade teachers sitting down and unpacking the standards together to say, okay, here's what the standard says, all students must be able to do X, Y, and Z? Do we all understand what that means? Because if we all understand what that means, if we're the team of fourth grade getting together and unpacking that standard, and we go and teach it, and then we're formatively assessing along the way, and we see, oh, Peter Noonan isn't quite getting it, he needs some intervention, we can provide that in a short block of time and follow up with another, just a check for understanding, which is also called an assessment, you know, to of of these students to see, did it make a difference? So so part of it is this collaborative process of being able to come together and and go through that. Now, Lisa referenced the new MTSS coordinator. Her name is Julie McCrina, and I just want to put that name on your radar, because she's already been working really closely with grade-level teams and content teams at each of our schools to start working through that, so that when we do put an intervention in place, we can be really clear about whether it's working or not. So we're putting some structure and form around it that may not have been there previously.
Mr. Leyton?
I just had a question about.
Did you get your mic?
Kind of the same issue, and whether or not we've looked at all at neighboring districts and their sort of gap when it comes to these students. Are we, do you know if we're, we're bigger, if we have a wider gap, if the low socioeconomic students are doing worse here? Or I'm kind of curious, is it a Northern Virginia kind of phenomenon versus into our more rural areas? I don't know.
It's it's everywhere. It is absolutely everywhere. I, you know, as as you know, prior to coming here, I did a lot of national and international consulting, and every school I, school system and school I went to said, can you help us close the gap between our economically disadvantaged students, our students with disabilities, and our students who are English language learners? And it truly.
I think if we can figure that out, the entire country will be looking to us. But but.
Well, and I would say if we can't figure it out, nobody can.
If we say, if we're actually lower in those areas than the state average, our students are lower than the state average, is that also true in Arlington, that they're so, they're low socioeconomic students are lower than the state average?
I don't know that. We'd have to do that analysis.
Yeah, it's not essential. I'm just sort of curious.
But it's definitely a wonder. It makes you want to.
Yeah. Well, we can look into that.
Mr. Castillo?
Just want to, with respect to math and science, do we look at male versus female performance on things? And is that, should we consider that as a special population with, you know, with regard to some anecdotal evidence that math and science performance among females, for some reason, doesn't necessarily keep pace with where they start out, flattens?
Why don't we, why don't we take a look at that, too? I don't, I don't, I don't know the data well enough between males and females to be able to make a judgment about whether it's an issue here or not. So let us do.
Okay.
Is that of interest to everybody? Yeah, okay.
All right, the the last section is just really more about the new graduation requirements. There's other assessments that we utilize, and these are all basically required now with the standards of accreditation, that we have to show this to the state. So one of them being CTE and kids taking credential. And these are some of the credential licensures that kids will sit for at George Mason High School and also over at Arlington Career Center. So we have 220 CTE credentialing exams that were taken just this school year, the majority of them being in the financial literacy. They take the WISE exam. They all sit for that. For international baccalaureate, we have a little bit of data. I got this from Dan Coase, and he's comparing the class of 2017 and 2018, and looking at our seniors who took one or more IB DP course exams, which has increased from 80 to 83%. Our juniors, who took one or more IB courses, went from 11 to 34. He, after speaking with him about this, he attributes this to a pathway that's being developed by having the AP CompSci or Computer Science courses in the ninth grade and 10th grade levels, and the kids want to continue. So to continue, they they take the diploma program, Computer Science courses. So there has been a pretty substantial increase as far as juniors taking DP courses. The seniors who actually went for an IB diploma went up. The IB diploma candidates who actually earned the diploma went down a little bit, but hey, we've got more trying it. And but if you look at the US average, the US average is 67% of students who actually earned the diploma were at 85%. The average grade for IB diploma candidates out of a possible score of seven is a, was 4.85 this year, and the average is a 4.31 for the United States, other schools that are DP. And then looking at our average score for the DP candidates out of a possible score 42, we scored about 30. The average in the United States is 27. And then percent of exam scores at four or above is at 78%, and we just lost the projector. Interesting. You got it? Okay. So, and looking at the very last one, there are 38 different diploma pro- program exams that are offered. And when you look at the world average, we actually had about 17, I think, out of 38, were the highest in in the world as far as other DP programs. And noting that we compare ourselves against other DP schools in the world, which a lot of them are private schools and and schools that are, kids have to apply to get into. It was 17. Maybe that. So that in itself is pretty, is pretty good. There we go. Advanced placement, a little bit of information on advanced placement, just really showing you the courses that we offer for advanced placement, and how many kids we have sitting in those courses, and then basically what their average scores. Again, Dave Sorensis supported with pulling some of this information, and and Dan Coase.
Ms. Seabird, can I just ask, on that last slide, is it possible to get some comparative data for that, like last year or?
Yes.
Or trends and that kind of thing?
And I was actually looking into that, and I didn't have the data access as of yesterday, because Mr. Coast has it, and he he isn't here in the division. But I can pull that information when he comes back, and we can. But I can pull that information when he comes back, and we can, I can share that with you.
Thanks.
And for dual enrollment, just showing, we do have our dual enrollment courses and how many kids are sitting in those courses right now. We have 104 kids, and some of the special populations, with 33 of those 104 are from our special populations. WEDA, the WEDA access again is for English language learners, 151 of those kids sat for that last year, and they have VDOE targets, 19% to show proficiency. Proficiency means that they actually exited the program, we're monitoring them. So for our students, 21.9% showed proficiency and exited, and the state was 19. And then for our progress, 71.6% of our kids actually showed progress, where they showed growth on the WEDA, and the target was 46%. And then PALS is the assessment that the state has us use for our elementary, and it's from JTP all the way up to third grade. And these are the percentages that, of kids who met the developmental range in the spring. So again, we're in the 90s, we're doing pretty well as far as the literacy. And this one's new, this one, we're actually training our kindergarten teachers tomorrow. It's the Virginia Kindergarten Readiness Program. This is now to be done in the fall, and then again in the spring to measure growth. This is similar to the PALS, well, the PALS is based on literacy. This is going to now introduce mathematics, self-regulation, social skills. So it's interesting. So we're doing the training tomorrow, I'm very interested in learning more about how it's going to look at especially self-regulation and social skills. And the teachers then are going to administer this to the kindergarteners next week. So this is new. And then to end, this is our assessment calendar, so all the assessments basically that we do division-wide are here and when we do them, and that is posted on our website. And then we'll end with our placemat, and knowing that we, we do have things to celebrate, but we also have things that we know we need to work on, and this, this is going to drive our work, looking at our goals through the collaboration, through looking at the assessment, making sure we're enriching, extending, intervening, and so on. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional questions? Number one for the...
Just following back up on the AP, I noticed there were, there were three AP courses where the average was below three, and, and I don't know what, what kind of benchmarks we use, but that, that would seem to me to be something that would be worth looking at. Any, any thoughts about those ones?
I think we need to talk with the teachers a little bit and take a look at the data, and I know that George Mason, the schools are going to be presenting in the fall sometime, and I think that we can ask them to kind of look at that and maybe present when they come.
Sort of a philosophical conversation, too, perhaps for another day, but, you know, Advanced Placement courses, the College Board did a study several years ago and included many, many divisions around the country, and then spoke with colleges and universities after the fact, and discovered that it was more important for a student to take the course than it was to get a three, four, or five on the assessment. And the reason for that was that the student experienced the rigor of what a college class feels like, much like our IB courses. And that experience of the rigor actually was more important than actually content acquisition, which I, I found interesting, because it really speaks to the skills necessary navigationally to be able to move through the college experience. It doesn't mitigate the fact altogether that we have three classes that got less than three as an average score, but I do, I do think it sets up sort of a philosophical conversation, and I would, and I would move it actually to IB as opposed to AP, and say, because we're teaching skills in IB of critical thinking, problem-solving, creativity, that those five Cs that the state's asking us to do, is I would think that it would be much more important for us to have kids experience that IB course than it would be for them to get a four, or five, or six, or seven on the assessment. And perhaps it's a conversation for another day, because it really is about experiencing the rigor, but I, but I do think it's something I want to add into the mix, you know, around your, your comment, because I think it's a good one. I think it's a good question to ask, but also begs the question, what's more important, the three or the experience?
Well, I, I'd also throw into the mix that I, I have some familiarity with, with seniors who are taking APs, and sometimes perhaps they don't approach them with the fidelity. Well, it's not all about getting a five, put it that way, so that might be another factor. So, so I, I agree, it's, it's an art, not a science.
Yeah. Anyway, I, I, to be honest, I also struggle sharing these data with you a little bit, because the N size of the students are, you know, in the bottom two are 27 and 25, and it doesn't take much to figure out who that teacher was, right? And so, what are we, are we setting something up also that may be hard, a hardship for that teacher, just by the way?
Yeah, and, and my view would be we shouldn't, and, and so I hope we don't.
Ms. Leighton?
And I had one question that's really kind of a very big picture question, I don't know if you have an answer to it, but as we continue to integrate IB, we have IB and then, which are, you know, much more, is kind of much more skill-based, and then the SOLs are very...
Knowledge.
Knowledge, fact-based. And, I mean, I'm just kind of curious what you think about that. It feels like a bit of a mismatch the more we integrate this. Are you at all concerned about that? I mean, would you like to eventually see sort of a, a change in the way that SOLs are done? I mean, what would be your big picture vision if you had control over it?
I think the state is really seriously looking at, at that already, and they've already started to implement that with the performance-based assessments. I think the performance-based assessments are exactly where we should be going with this. And again, it's aligned totally to what IB is looking for, is that real-world relevance, the kids are actually taking the knowledge, they're applying it. A lot of times when they apply it, it's, it's in a service-learning kind of approach, they're trying to solve a problem in some way, they're integrating their skills, so it's not just about math, it's about taking your math skills and your English skills and combining them. Maybe you have to write an essay, but you have to like also draw a, a diagram and use math to, to do that, to, to do a presentation, to present to an audience. So it's really integrating all of those skills together in some kind of a performance assessment that's linked to a career, so kids actually start thinking about their passions and their interests and what they want to do after they graduate, and have those soft skills and those communication skills. And that's, the state really is moving in that direction, and, and I know we really are leading in the nation in that area, so I think as long as we continue that work, I, I think that's really the right way to go. And, and the sitting for that fact-based, you know, assessment, some kids do really well with that, and other kids, it's like, you know, it's just not their thing, but they can show their learning in another way.
Any other questions?
Mr. Rangier?
Just first, a thank you for the presentation, which was very helpful.
My pleasure.
Yeah. I think many people here would tell you I love data, so it's really fun to see the data.
Yeah, I almost got you guys all buttons that said I love data, but couldn't find any.
The other thing is, as, as, as you look through the, the results, one thing I found in a lot of other spaces, I don't know if it's true or not, is sometimes people think things are a numerator problem and they're a denominator problem. And that's particularly significant in a small place like here, where, you know, there are all sorts of pieces that come into it, you know? We attract a particular, in some cases, family with certain goals because we, education is so important. And that can drive these statistics in odd ways. And with AP and IB, because, because we're an IB program, we probably get kids to do IB that might not do it somewhere else. And maybe some kids do AP rather than IB, and so, I think, that should, it, it may not be like things like the actual result, what the, what the, what the division is, it's just that we're, we're putting a lot more people, we're increasing the size of the denominator, so the, the score average can drop. And I think that can be true of things like economically disadvantaged students as well, it's just, we're small enough that there are micro-phenomenons that can really drive big changes. And it's, all that said, I think the science and math scores for economically disadvantaged students are something that we've now seen a couple of years, and we really need to focus on.
To drill down, I agree.
Any other questions? All right, I have one question and a comment. So with that economically disadvantaged group, as well as, I guess, the social education group, when you talked about the kind of more advanced classes they're taking, do they tend to lean towards one over the other if they make that leap at all?
I think we see kids taking IB, the DP program, oh, there's a lot of kids. I think Dan Coast actually gave me the number, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw it out. I think it's around 60 kids that are actually in the DP program that are in the special populations. And I know we have the kids in the dual enrollment that we saw up here, I'm not sure about AP, but I think a lot of times, too, it's that encouragement of just encourage them, take that risk and be a risk taker and, and to do it, and that comes down to like, are teachers encouraging them, are counselors, and that's part of our job, to make sure that they take that opportunity and, and they do that. So it'd be interesting to look at those numbers a little bit more, because we didn't look at it across the board to see which ones are...
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see where those students tend to, when they are encouraged to, to take that leap and challenge, where do they tend to go towards? On the others, comment of what Dr. Noonan and Mr. Castillo was talking about, my day job, that's, I say that all the time, of students, when they are taking AP courses in particular, it's better to challenge yourself in taking the course. Yes, the reward is if you get the four or five, that you may get credit for it, but you're much better prepared of what a college course is going to be in taking, taking the chance of taking the AP, IB course or dual enrollment, because it does give you a, a sense of what you're going to be walking into a year or two years later, because it's, a lot of students who don't do that tend to struggle a little bit in their first year of college to, to get caught up by, because they're kind of a little shell-shocked by what that first English, particularly math course that they walk into, they're a little bit more challenged by that, so. But yes, we, it is definitely a, something that we strongly encourage, and if you take the test and you get the, the four or five, great, because you just potentially help yourself move your college experience along a little quicker. If not, you're better prepared for, for the overall rigor that you're going to be walking into over college life. If there are no more questions, thank you very much, Ms. Seabird.
Thank you.
Continue.
We have a great team.
All right, next up is the MRS Public Library, is it documented? Yeah, thank you. This evening, I wanted to share with you, probably more as a heads-up, but publicly as a heads-up, that we have been in conversation with Jennifer Carroll and Kimberly Callahan from the Mary Riley Stiles Library about potentially using part of our site during their renovation of the library. So, as you may or may not know, the library board made a decision to close the public library during the period of time in which they're going through renovation, in an effort to sort of speed up the process, because it'll be easier for them to do it in one phase as opposed to multiple phases. And I was approached, I was approached by somebody on our staff, actually, who said, what do you think about trying to figure out if we might be able to give up some of our space for the library during that period of time? Because the library had been looking for different places to potentially go, and they looked at maybe a, a temporary building on the site at City Hall, they looked at 400 North Washington as possibly going in there. And it occurred to some of us that next school year, right about the time when they're going to need to move out of Mary Riley Stiles Library, we'll be moving the fifth grade classes out of the modular classroom at Thomas Jefferson and into TJ, as we move the second grade out of TJ and over to the teachers, anyway. The kids will stay at Mount Daniel for another year, but moving the teachers for second grade out of the Thomas Jefferson and into Mount Daniel, which means that we would have the modular space vacant at that point in time. So, meeting with Jennifer and, and Kim, and, and talking with Sevvy and Kristen, we met over at the modular space, and they walked it, and of course, it's way better than anything they could ever imagine going into at 400 North Washington or into a portable trailer somewhere. And so we've been continuing to have the conversation as potentially putting the public library in that modular building, it would be for one year only, until the completion of the library. They would move over a portion of their collection, one of the classrooms would likely be used for the circulation area, one of the classrooms would be used for offices and the like, and then there'd be four other classrooms that would be available for, for books and shelving and the like. It seemed to me that it was a real win-win opportunity, because we, as a school system, would be able to help out the general government in a time of need, and at the same time, we would be, we would have a public library right next to one of our schools, and we would be growing public library patrons as early as, you know, second, third, or third, fourth, fifth grade, to be able to use that public library routinely and often. So I wanted to share that with you, as sort of where our thinking was as we began this conversation. Of course, it raises a lot of questions, right? There are questions around, would there be an, an MOU developed? Probably, we'd probably get into some conversation about what an MOU might look like, what might be involved in that, what would the space actually look like, would, how would the public enter, for example, the modular? And we've started to have some conversations about that. So one of the things that we, we've discussed is potentially flipping the entrance of the modular to the other side, there's a back door, so perhaps shutting off the side that currently has the ramp that's next to TJ and maybe flipping it, and then putting a cut in the fence that would allow the public to be able to walk up. We've talked about things such as what would the hours of the public library be, would they interfere with school operations and the like? So we've talked about potentially opening, opening the library after school's in, so say 9:30, and they might continue past school being out, and then people would go. Potentially looking at safety and security elements, how would we monitor that site, you know, to make sure that people that are supposed to be there are there, the people that aren't, aren't? So talking about potential solutions around adding maybe a Securitas person, continuing to utilize our external cameras and the like. But tonight, more than anything, I just wanted to, to give you a heads-up, that we are sort of in this conversation as potentially utilizing that space for a one-year temporary purpose of the, for the public library. And again, as I sort of dug into it further, it really kind of feels like a, a win for, for all of us. It sort of helps this general government and the public library, and in the end, it, it helps us, too. It helps build young readers and patrons of the public library system. So with that, Mr. Chair, entertaining some questions that you might have. Tonight was more of a heads-up than anything.
Any questions? Ms. Gill?
So I just heard this MOU, we would discuss who pays for build-out, and then they would return it to us in the same condition in which they took the session.
I, I would anticipate that that's, that's the way we would look at it, was we would, we would ask for it back in its original condition, and if there was any build-out, for example, the floors, you know, we went and we looked at the drawings for the installation of the modulators, I think they're good, up 50 pounds per square foot, no, that's not right, more than 50 pounds per square foot, but I forget exactly what it is, but the, the weight of the, the books are greater than the existing floor weight per square foot, so if they had to put some reinforcement in, that would be at their cost, and we would ask them to take it out at the end. Any cuts in the fence, we would ask them to replace that, and all of those would be likely born from, from them.
And the same with the Securitas, if we had extra security, would they pay for that or would they...
I think we'd need to figure that out. Yep, good question.
Mr. Castillo?
Hey, Mr. Chair, I was just wondering, what were we going to do, what would we do with those if we, if this had never come up?
Yeah, it's a really great question. We've looked at repurposing that, that space for a variety of different things. As we've gone through our general analysis, we think this, this space is best suited for, for classes or for a purpose like this. We've talked about, so, so I guess, I guess the answer to your question is that if we were to move out, move the fifth grade into the building and the second grade out of... out, move the fifth grade into the building and the second grade out of Thomas Jefferson over to Mount Daniel, I suspect that that modular might sit empty temporarily until we began to grow again, which I expect we will at some point. But there are six classrooms in that modular, and there are nine second grade classes. So it means we're gonna have some space in TJ already, we'll have three additional classrooms. So I don't know how we would repurpose that, but we looked at it and we recognized that it's probably best used for classroom space or something of that sort.
Mr. Anderson?
I guess a couple of questions, building on some questions, sort of process and timeline? When do you anticipate we might have another discussion, or are we looking at things that we would need to weigh in on?
Yeah, I know that the library board has a meeting tomorrow night. And so we've sort of timed these sort of conversations that way. I would anticipate that we would want to start working on getting something drafty, potentially to our respective boards in the November-December timeline to take a look at. And once we've done that, give you a chance to give some feedback around it. The other part of it that's really important to us is when and if we move forward with this, being able to really, really talk to the community about what that looks like too. Because I know that that parent community and the community next to Thomas Jefferson on Oak Street and further back to the west is really important to us, and making sure that they understand what's going on as well.
Mr. Reiminger?
So with your last comment, you sort of presaged what I was gonna say, which is just, I think that, I'm very predisposed to like the idea, because it's an important thing and it's great to use the space, and I see the synergies that you suggested. The challenges to me seem around security and oddly enough, parking. And so I think we'll need the right solutions to those if we're gonna go forward. And I think, as you were just saying, community engagement and parent engagement is, in the reverse, exactly important for those two issues. Security for parents and parking for the local neighborhood. So the better and faster and deeper the communication can be, the better.
Good, thank you. Any other questions?
Same here, with the security pieces, making sure that we, working with them, make sure the security piece is taken care of, of the interest in, if it's working with them on the potential costs it would come with bringing on an additional Securitas person to, I would assume, patrolling the perimeter of the campus and there. And then working also with the neighborhood, because parking will then become a little bit more challenging if the library's there. But I think that's a two-way street with us as well as general government kind of engaging in those conversations as well with the community.
Right, and I think we would leave a lot of that public engagement to the general government, because it would be their move. I would see us sort of getting with them, but then sort of leading the charge around that community engagement.
Thank you very much. Next up, let's conversation about our school board city council retreat next week.
Right, you all have your retreat coming up with the city council next Monday. And I just wanted to put out there that Marty Goodell and Celeste Heath are continuing to work on the arrangements for that. At this point, it sounds like there's gonna be, it's gonna be outdoors somewhere. We're not exactly sure where, we think over by Tinner Hill. And as we have some more detail, we'll share that. But I did want to sort of go back to, I think, the original intent of this retreat was to have an opportunity to sort of gather together in a non-stressful, sort of kind and generous environment, collegial environment, where we can talk about our respective desires, hopes, and dreams for our organizations, and ours being obviously the schools. And so I wanted to throw out to you all, to see, because I anticipate that, you know, Wyatt and I will do some sort of overview of some of the work that we're doing in our respective organizations that aspirationally meet the desires of our respective governance bodies, would be to see if you felt comfortable with me sharing the placemat that we've talked a lot about here, and then how our triennial plan backs up that placemat. And I think for a couple of reasons. One is it sort of speaks to what we're working on right now, both in our schools and as a governance organization and as a community, but also talks about what our longer-range plans are with respect to that triennial plan. And we're in the middle of updating it, by the way. So we would share last year's triennial plan, but we would share the linkages between the placemat and the triennial plan. And I think, Mr. Anderson, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think the spirit of the evening was to just kind of talk about what were our big picture ideas for our work. And I think that those two documents in and of themselves sort of speak to aspirationally what we're after. So just wanted to make sure I was on the right track on your behalf as I was thinking about this.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan. Anyone want to, any comments or anything? Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I mean, my initial reaction is that seems perfectly sensible to me, in sharing those materials. I don't see anything but positives to come from that. The other comment, I suppose, would be, it's an opportunity for us to take stock of the fact that we already have a lot of ongoing activities, both board members working with council, and you working with the city manager, and staffs working together on a variety of things. If there's a way of having that be something that gets highlighted as just sort of a general reminder, I don't think that would go awry either.
Mr. Castillo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the other, this is probably a good idea too, because the big, insurmountable, we're never gonna get through it challenges are not surmounted, but it looks like they're in process, so it's kind of an opportunity to talk to. So now what do we do? And so I think it's a good idea. And any idea what's for dinner?
I'm as equally excited as you are. After eating at the Taste of Falls Church with Mayor Tartar though, I'm sure whatever it is, get it quick, because he can eat.
Any other comments?
The only one I have is just, as Mr. Anderson said, I agree, I think sharing that information would be a great point for us. I would just be prepared if any conversations come up talking about processing, when I say process, as we move into that. I don't think necessarily, I wouldn't go in with that thought, but I wouldn't want to be flat-footed either of not having something ready in case anyone on that side has a conversation keeps about it.
My hope is that the city manager and I can assuage people from having that conversation. I really, and I guess I would say to you, I would hope that we can just go in and have an enjoyable evening and not have to get into anything too heavy, whether it's budget or revenue sharing. I think there'll be time for that. But my hope for this evening was just to kind of share sort of what are our big picture, what's the big picture work that we're all up against together as a team, so that as we move forward through the budget season and through some of those stickier points, that we all recognize that we come to this with benevolent ideals, you know, and this is what we're trying to accomplish. And I just think having a better understanding of what each other's work is will help at least sort of frame out why there's strong advocacy on either side. And maybe I'm a little Pollyanna around that, maybe. But I'm also, you know, I'm also a realist, so I get it.
And that is my hope as well, because I think all of us are looking forward from it, for the perspective of an opportunity to share, kind of learn what's going on with each other's, with each respective bodies, what they're doing. But just be prepared, just in case.
Mr. Anderson?
And I guess I would just like to take the opportunity to say thanks to you for working with the city manager and staff to really kind of make this come forward. I think, I'm hopeful it's gonna put us in good place.
Then next up, will the city affordable housing, affordable living policy?
Yeah, just in your packets for this evening, you have an email that was, that came out from the city clerk on Friday, September 14th. And it references the city council's request for comment from boards and commissions on their affordable living policy. On September 11th, the city council referred that affordable living policy for review to all the boards and commissions across the City of Falls Church. And so they are asking that you all have a chance to take a look at the draft affordable living policy that was attached in your materials. And if you wouldn't mind taking a look at that, what they're asking for is some feedback by November 8th, so we have a good long lead time. But if you wouldn't mind taking a look at it, and if you could get me some comments that you may have by the end of this month, what we can do is we can draft a memo in response to the affordable living policy that incorporates your comments, and we'll circulate that to the board for your review before it goes over to the city council. We have a little bit of lead time, we're able to do that. And if that's acceptable to you, Mr. Chair, that would work for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just to, I guess, piggyback on our previous topic of the retreat, I think that this ties in nicely and would be an opportunity for Dr. Noonan to highlight the Family Resource Center, just because I think it does have some relevance to it. And so I think it also shows how the school board can participate in these discussions. So I think that, you know, that's as many things as we can kind of tie in the school board's relevance to the city's projects would be to our advantage.
Thank you. Mr. Castillo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just to build on that comment, I think one of the things I think a lot of people in the community have been concerned about is how much more difficult it is for our teachers and staff to afford to live in Falls Church. And I came across an article today from Streets Blog USA that talked about lack of housing hurts workers more than traffic, and just talks about how much more valuable that having housing is than reduced traffic congestion. And so I think if we can find a way to mesh our goals for making it possible for more of our Falls Church staff to find a way to live in the city, I think that dovetails very well with affordable housing.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo. Any other comments?
If you wouldn't mind just shooting me an email to that effect, I think it's a nice preamble to any feedback that you all might have with respect to the affordable housing, living policy.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anything else to come up tonight?
I have just one sort of announcement. As you all know, it's been welcoming Falls Church, has been going on, and we are in the process of standing up a Family Resource Center that I think supports the idea and notion of welcoming Falls Church rather significantly. We met with Erica Zabalos and others to figure out how we might be able to find a space at Thomas Jefferson. We put an October 1st, I put an October 1st deadline on having something in place, and I'm looking forward to being able to stand that up. In addition to that, as part of our response to welcoming Falls Church, I wanted to put on your radar, October 15th at 10 o'clock in the morning, it's not confirmed yet, but we're working on it. We would, on October 15th at 10:00 in the morning, at Mary Ellen Henderson, we are going to hold a citizenship and naturalization ceremony for some of our community members. And it's part of our, I've actually have been personally wanting to do this for a very long time. I think it's a great civics lesson, and it will be part of our civics program at Henderson. But just wanted to put that out there. As the date gets closer and the details get more firm, I'll let you know. But super excited about being able to hold a ceremony like that in one of our schools here in the City of Falls Church.
Anything else? If not, we stand to earn pretty even, thank you all very much.